So, welcome. Good morning, Mr. Administrator. Kicks us off.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we have several of our constitutional officers and also discussing your budget. So first, we start off with Supervisor of Elections, then we'll go to the Property Appraiser, the Sheriff, and the Clerk of the Circuit Court, and then we'll take you up at the end if we can.
Yeah, we'll move Agenda Item 3 to the end, and also Commissioners, if you're following along on your iPad, please refresh in Granite so the latest presentations are loaded.
Very good. So first, we'll start it off with our Supervisor of Elections, Julie Marcus.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, Barry, and a shout out to Jewel. It's a pleasure to be here this morning, and I am grateful to be first on your agenda versus the poor soul who has to come last on a Friday afternoon. So with that being said, come again? Ken? Sorry, Ken. All right. Well, thank you for allowing me to be first. And so here today, when we talk about elections, I feel like you need to include two elements every time, and that's access and integrity. And during the two years between our general election cycles, we work to ensure that we maintain that balance between those two elements. My staff and I, we get in the weeds, like literally. We get in the weeds. We look at every aspect of every process, and then we have to look at, obviously holistically, election administration as a whole. And when developing this budget, we considered everything to ensure that our voters continue to have a seamless, positive voting experience. And that experience includes elections that voters believe are conducted fairly and accurately and securely. My proposed budget includes costs associated, obviously, with the gubernatorial general election, addressless maintenance activities, maintaining software and equipment, educating our voters, and protecting the vote. When putting together any proposed budget, I challenge staff to manage costs while keeping voters at the forefront of all decisions. Of course, in elections administration, like anything else, costs have increased across the board. Let me just look at gas, freight, postage, paper, people. To offset rising costs, we looked across every cost center, taking something as simple as ordering paper a year in advance to get the best deal to something as comprehensive as renegotiating some of our largest contracts. But keeping in line with our core values, we just couldn't consider cutting back on some things like hardening our buildings and systems and ensuring voters have access so that they're able to participate in elections. I am pleased that we were able to come under our base budget target with one decision package for your consideration. Our fiscal 2023 proposed budget is reflective of what we need to provide access to voter registration and the ballot, while at every step maintaining the integrity of our electoral process. Today, we are exactly 60 days from the primary election. We are going to get final ballot language from the state today, which is the last piece that we need to complete our ballot proofs. We'll have 25 base ballot styles, hundreds of precinct styles we'll be proofing this weekend, and we'll be mailing ballots out to our military and overseas voters in just a couple of weeks. And I want voters to get election-ready and go to votepanelis.gov. Just last week and over the next couple of weeks, voters have received voter information cards. We asked voters to look at those cards, look at everything. This is a primary election. We are a closed primary state, which means that if you are not registered with a political party, then you cannot vote in that political party's primary. So if you're a registered Republican, you can vote in registered Republican primaries and for nonpartisan contests. If you're a registered Democrat, you can vote in Democratic contests and nonpartisan. And if you're registered with no party affiliation, which is on your card would say NPA, or you belong to a minor political party, then you are going to be eligible to vote for nonpartisan candidate contests only. So please keep that in mind and know that you have to, if you want to change your political party, to be able to vote in those partisan contests, that you need to do that 29 days prior to the primary election. So that would be the deadline, 29 days. But all of this information about updating your signature, your name, your address, what's going to be on the ballot, what's going to be on your specific ballot, information about voting by mail, information about early voting, election day, all of it. For official election information, please go to votepanelis.gov.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, could you explain what the definition of a universal primary is, please?
Yes. So we have a few universal primary contests. So written in Florida statute is a concept that actually was because of a sheriff contest that took place many years ago. And what happened was, what they wanted to avoid happening is if there are only candidates that are representative of one political party. So we have a few of these, depending on where you live in the county, that you may be eligible to vote for. But if there's only one political party represented in the primary, and there is no one who's going to be in the general election, meaning a writing candidate, or a candidate that's representing a different political party, or somebody who's running with no party affiliation, then everyone within that jurisdiction would be eligible to vote in that primary election. So it's meant to be inclusive of everyone versus exclusive, where the law, how it used to be. So it's a really good law change, and that's what, I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Eggers.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so maintaining that balance between access and integrity, ensuring fair, accurate, and secure elections, and having, I think, one of the most outstanding, unwavering, committed group of folks working in our office, is what we need to preserve voter confidence in our representative democracy. We need people to participate, and they need to believe in what we have. And I would just like to acknowledge my Chief Deputy, Mark Gillette, who's here with me, and also my Deputy/Communications Director, Dustin Chase, for their hard work in helping me put together this budget. Also to the staff from OMB, Barry, Jill, thank you to all of you. And again, we're in this together. It's our great republic. So thank you for your continued support, and I appreciate it, and I open, obviously, to questions if you have any.
Questions. Commissioner Flowers.
It may be reflective here, and I may have missed it, but do you have enough to cover in case you have any machines that may go down so you'll have those backups? Do you have enough, or do you need to purchase some additional equipment? Because not only do we have the gubernatorial race coming up, but then the presidential year right around the corner. So just want to make sure you have what you need.
It's a two-sided question. So I believe we have what we need to be able to conduct a gubernatorial election. If there's any blessing the mess, it's a gubernatorial election versus a presidential election year, just because of pure voter turnout. Also, we may not be at a two-card ballot where we would be possibly in a presidential versus a gubernatorial. But I'm just going to be upfront, there is no equipment. Even if I wanted to go out and get another high-speed scanner, it does not exist in the world. So that is something that I've talked to Barry about. We're looking at a long-term plan where we are going to need to reevaluate, and we're going to have to upgrade, because that's something that the state is recertifying, new equipment and new software. So we would need to transition to the new DS-950s versus what we have now, which is the DS-850s. They're certified, everything works. It's just that they don't exist. So we need to transition to that next phase once all of that becomes available. So we'll be looking at that along with our electronic poll books. Those are kind of coming to the end of life, and we need to look at those too. So that's something that I've brought to Barry's attention.
I didn't know that, so I guess, thank you. And then, not a question, but just a compliment. I am very appreciative of the professionalism from the men that you walk in the door, the young ladies right there, when you go up on the floors, the information that you send out, the reminder emails that you send out. I received my new voter ID card in the mail, and so did my son. And I looked it over, and all is well. And the constant education you all provide, as well as being willing to have staff go out to the community and provide education, and even answering, I'm sure, the barrage of questions, because there was so much uncertainty and anxiousness about precincts, change of district, what does this mean, you know, and all of that. So just want to compliment you guys on just staying steady, steadfast, not, you know, getting all in the weeds in that situation, but just staying focused and doing what you needed to do to assure that the information was out as best as you could get it out when you received it, and that you all just work with such professionalism and courtesy. I really appreciate that. I've appreciated that since 1998 or so, and it just gets better every year. And I'm not just saying that to make you smile. I'm glad it's making you smile, but I'm just being honest. So thank you so very much. Appreciate you all.
Commissioner Giraud.
Just a question. Was everybody supposed to have gotten a new voter ID card?
Yes. If you live in, if you are a registered Pinellas County voter, you will be, it's in stages. It's not over yet. So if you don't get your card by like July 11th, you need to contact our office. But so we're just going through, basically, we need to stagger it, because you have a call center, and to have, like, all of a sudden, 700,000 people get one thing, and then you would have that influx of calls and questions. So we're at the like 250,000 mark per week, trying to just kind of, yeah, that's where we're at.
Further, Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, so there's some stuff in the news right now where a supervisor wasn't allowing people watching how they do the recount. And are we prepared to do streaming or whatever it takes to make sure that people feel like we have integrity? If we have to do a recount?
We have a facility that is large enough and can take whatever we need to provide transparency to any process, whether we're actually in the middle of, and none of this is new. Everything that we do is open to the public. Every canvassing board meeting, every ballot that's tabulated, every ballot that's ever been duplicated, every recount, every audit, all of it, has always been open to the public, within feet, open to the public. So I implore people to come and witness all of these things happen in every election, because I think that you leave saying, hey, that was done properly, and I see it, I saw it firsthand. And a lot of folks leave our office kind of being our ambassadors and going out and saying that, yes, Pinellas County runs fair and accurate elections, so, and secure elections for that matter. So, yeah, we have plenty of space, we have plenty of availability. Everything is noticed on our website, everything is noticed to the candidates, political parties, of everything that's happening. So.
Thanks. I think everybody needs to hear that and hear it over and over and over again, especially when you hear stories about things that happen somewhere else. And I know, this is kind of, I'm going to ask you to do the same kind of advertisement kind of thing, because I know, I sent you an article about what happened in DeKalb, Georgia, DeKalb County, Georgia. And a lot of things that happened in that election are, and I don't know if you got to read it. Did you get to read it?
Yes, ma'am.
So it was really, really bad, 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 bad. The whole process was incredibly horrible. And when they did the recount, they only recounted that one election. They didn't recount all the ballots for every single race. And so they're blaming it on a software error on these Dominion machines, and I understand we don't have a Dominion machine. But somehow, this Dominion machine zeroed out one candidate's votes in 33 of the 40 precincts. And so I know I asked you about this, but I think it's important, especially since this happened again in Georgia, after it happened two years ago in Georgia, and they denied it happened, and the year it happened again. If you could just talk about that and how our system is different than what Georgia's doing, I think it's just good for it to be said and for people to hear. Thanks.
Sure. So, I can only speak to the state of Florida. Even reading that article and having one paragraph that talked about a programming issue, which implied to me that something happened maybe on an administrative level, that somebody didn't do what they were supposed to do during a testing process. But I'm literally reading a paragraph. I didn't contact anybody there. I wasn't there, so I don't know what happened. But in Florida, what I do know is that the systems that are, there's only two. So you have Dominion, and you have Election System and Software. So you have 18 counties that use Dominion, and you have the rest of us use Election System and Software. Florida's Department of State goes through a rigorous certification process. And actually, right now, there's another company, is it Heart? That's going through a process to get certified to possibly allow four counties to consider that as a voting system to use. So before anyone can even consider a voting system, it has to go through Florida certification process. And that's not a small little statement. That is, it's millions of dollars that companies have to go through, which is why there's only two in the state of Florida, to go through this process to allow four of a county to use the system. Then, once we get the system, it goes through an acceptance testing that we don't just hand off to our vendor. We sit there, and we have checklists. We go through and we test using Testex. We go through a checklist, making sure that we, before we take that piece of equipment on, it has been vetted by us. Then, prior to every election, it goes through a public logic and accuracy test. Every piece of equipment, whether it's used at the polling place, at an early voting site, or in our office with the high-speed scanners, every piece of equipment goes through a test. And I'm even leaving out the preventative maintenance process that we go through every single year with all of our voting equipment. Then, you have chain of custody procedures. You have procedures where you know where, who has looked at a seal number, has a seal number been verified. You have machine tapes, meaning there's no single point of failure. You have double people looking at everything, and you have, which I think is very, I mean, you have to have that. You have to have redundancies. You can't have single points of failure. You have to have multiple people looking at things. You have to have things sealed. Things have to be transparent. Like I said, these tests are conducted in public. When the equipment goes out to the polls on election day, you have poll workers who are verifying seal numbers. They're printing tapes to verify that the machines are starting at zero. You have, before we even mail a ballot, and again, this speaks to, I don't know what their procedure was in Georgia, but in Pinellas, our procedure is before a ballot is even printed for mass production. It goes through our tabulators to make sure that it actually works, because you've seen that in the paper, where sometimes they're like, oh, they're going to have to duplicate, you know, 10,000 ballots because it was skewed. duplicate, you know, 10,000 ballots because it was skewed or the, you know, the timing codes were off. Those are all things, as an administrator, you're looking at what could possibly go wrong and how can we mitigate anything happening? And so you want to test your actual ballots to make sure that they actually can be tabulated before you go out and you print hundreds of thousands of ballots and mail them to people. So if there is an error, you can catch it on the front end and not have to then possibly miss a legal deadline. So it's all these things that you're taking into consideration, procedures, testing, who's looking at this, how are we proofing that? Because, I mean, just like I said, this weekend alone, going through the proof of our ballot, I mean, God forbid you spell somebody's name wrong. No less, you know, you test a piece of equipment and there's an issue. I know that there was an issue in Florida some years ago that came up, that should have come up during a public inaccuracy test. And it actually, we changed our procedure over something that somebody else had to go through. So what happened was is that you have, when you do a controlled test deck, and most of you have been on the canvassing boards, you know what I'm talking about, when you go through a test, you're like, these are the results we are looking for. And then we're going to, you know, we print a zero report showing that the scanner started at zero, so we know the test started zero. And then we're, final results, once we conduct the test, need to be compared to the controlled results. And the controlled results are, we fill in ovals on ballots and contest A, candidate A gets 10 votes, candidate B gets five votes, and then you go to the next contest. And you don't want the same voting pattern. Because if you have 10 here, five here, you go to the next contest, you have 10, five, what if, what if something happens, you know, what if you programmed it wrong? You can't catch it. So something that happened in Palm Beach some years ago, we all looked at that and said, oh my goodness, you can't repeat contest patterns because you couldn't catch that error, that programming error. So now, change that, and so now you have a 10, five, a five, 10, and you never repeat a pattern on your test deck so that you can make sure. So it's doing simple things like that, and maybe it was something as simple as that, I don't know the answer. But most of the time it is. Most of the time it's something that you're like, wow, that's, it was literally somebody pushed this or it switched, you know, that's what it ends up being. So when you, when I talk about getting into the weeds and when I talk about looking at every procedure, how can we improve upon every single aspect of it so we can make it more secure? Because I still, to this day, will say that the 2020 general election was the most, had the best technology we've ever had in the history of Florida, we had the best procedures that we came up with. And guess what, 20 years from now, I'm going to be saying that this is the best because technology improves, processes improve, voter, all of it improves. It better improve, that's our job, is to constantly improve the process. So I know that was a very winded response, but it's meant to be because it's very important for me to make sure that voters have confidence in our process so they participate in it.
Thank you so much. And it was important that that was said because I think there's a lot of mistrust because of the media and then when things like that happen, kind of that story didn't trickle down to Florida, but it just happened to be one of my best friends that was in that election and so I'm pretty close to what happened and if that ever happened here, I would be very embarrassed. And so, I'm, thank you, I appreciate it.
And I just want to say, with the redundancy, you know, having those machine tapes, having those USB sticks, and then most importantly, having an actual paper ballot and having all of those things to go back to is really critical. And, you know, so, back in 2008, we all shifted to paper ballots here in the state of Florida and amen, I'm so grateful because anyone, which we have not gotten a request, but anyone can come in and look and audit those ballots at any time. It's a public record, but you can come and audit them. They're there.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you. And thank you, Julie, for all of the hard work and just absolute dedication you put into making sure that things are right. I can attest, because I've served on the canvassing board, what an incredible education, oh, sorry, what an educational experience it was to just see up close and firsthand. And you've heard me say this, I don't know how many times, it was astounding to know that there were checklists to check the checklist, which you just, after a while, when you go through all of this repetitive stuff, it just is, you just say to yourself, good grief, we've already done this and nothing is wrong. But it is really, really important. And I think it's also important for whoever out there may be listening to what we're talking about today, for them to know. I've been on this commission for 10 years now and many times the supervisor has come and asked for either an amendment or needs additional funds for X, Y, and Z, and we have never not accommodated any of the requests that have come from the supervisor's office. And I think that's a testament to the trust and the integrity that we all feel towards your office. So keep up the good work.
Thank you for that.
And it doesn't hurt that you had really big shoes to step into.
Yes, ma'am.
And you've done it admirably, I must say.
I say, it's a phrase I use often that I was brought up by the best, and I mean I really have. I was able to work with Deborah Clark, a true patriot, I mean, this woman, 42 years of service to the citizens of Pinellas County. And I was very blessed to be with her for 18 years and, you know, the high standards that we, that were set, but, you know, that's my wheelhouse. I mean, you, there's no, to use her phrase, there are no mulligans in elections. You have to get it right. And so that's the, we continue with that standard. There's no mulligans, it's high standards, we have to make sure that we get it right from literally to the point of voter registration till we certify the election. All of it has to be right. And so there's, again, we have incredible staff, it's the hardest working people I know, and they will do whatever it takes to do what's right for the voters of Pinellas County.
Commissioner Eggers has a question.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, great presentation and I like some of the in-the-weed descriptions of what you guys go through. Maybe you could just speak quickly to two things. One, hardware backup that we have currently in place so that you have the regular tabulation machine that you put everything through, and then all of it goes through a backup system as well, they're made by different manufacturers. I just wanted you to maybe touch briefly on that. And then, this, that little, just a few sentences on your voter registration roll cleaning process that you guys go through, just to make sure that what's supposed to be, the people that are supposed to be voting are voting and the people that have, you know, passed away, moved away, are taken out of the system. Just a, maybe a couple of comments on that. Thank you. And keep up the great work, Julie.
Thanks. Okay, so, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Eggers, for that. Last year, well, you all approved us receiving funds so we could purchase an independent auditing system. And we have a lot of recounts in Pinellas County, so we've only been able to use it once because we've conducted four recounts and they've resulted in manuals, so then you don't, you don't conduct audits. But let me just talk about this audit process that we have because it, I think it's brilliant. So we have the Election System and Software, which is our tabulation system, and we have Clear Ballot, which is a separate, independent auditing system. So what happens is, is the ballots themselves, through the election process, go through either the high-speed scanners, if they're mail ballots or provisional ballots, or if you vote at the polls on election day or at early voting sites, the actual voter themselves is feeding the ballot through the scanner and that's how it's being tabulated. All of those ballots then are scanned through this independent auditing system. That independent auditing system, meaning it is separate from the TAB system, so you have the TAB system tabulating votes and ballots, and you have this independent auditing system tabulating votes and ballots. And what the system did in the St. Petersburg primary election, which is the election we were able to use it in, and I can't remember, I think it was you, Commissioner Eggers, that was on, were you on that board? Okay. So we were able to use it then. And what's awesome about this system is that it audits, in Pinellas, we audit every single contest, every single candidate, every single vote precinct, everything, 100% is looked at independently by this auditing system. And so in that election, we had 77,000-ish independent ovals. And it was 100% exactly the same as our tabulation system. So you had two systems, independent of each other, conducting in essence, an election, and both came up with the same exact results. So I think that that is a testament, not to mention, we've conducted those recounts. One, as much as one vote difference, and it did not change the vote count. So I feel very confident in our processes, to the point where you have systems saying that, yep, we checked that, and to the vote, it's accurate. So now we'll go back to, so, because that's important on the backside, so you have the whole voting side, and then you have the registration side. And Dustin will freak out if I take 40 minutes to go through address list maintenance and eligibility list maintenance because I can see him panicking with that behind my head and, but I won't. But we have two types of address list, two types of list maintenance. So you have a voter roll where people register to vote and now you're on the voter rolls and this is a living, breathing system. So every day, we are conducting address and eligibility list maintenance, they are separate things. Address list maintenance is, where are you living? Please update your address so we can make sure that we're sending you the right things, make sure that we know where you live, make sure that you're not at a business, all of this good stuff. Then you have eligibility list maintenance. Are you dead? Are you, you know, mentally incapacitated in regards to voting? Are you duplicate voter, so on and so forth? So eligibility list maintenance means, we need to go through due process because you should, you probably, you don't, you couldn't, you can't be on the voter rolls as someone who's deceased or somebody who may be convicted of a felony that rises to the level that you can't be on the voter rolls. And then you have address list maintenance. Where do you live? So we conduct these things every single day, but also built-in statute is required address list maintenance, where we have to conduct a county-wide type of address list maintenance function. Also in Pinellas, is, we add to that process before we do any large mailing. So we just conducted this huge mailing of voter info cards before we mail ballots, before we do anything that's a large concept, we conduct a national change of address run so that we can get that information back and we can make updates to the system without having to receive necessarily information from the voter initially. So we are constantly conducting list maintenance on our systems when the law requires it, but also every single day, whether voters are contacting us, whether we receive information from different agencies, so on and so forth. So I feel very confident that Pinellas County voter rolls are very accurate based on what we do, exhaustive measures that we go through to ensure that voters are registered properly.
Thank you, Julie, I appreciate that. And just one final comment I'd make, that most, all of the actions that you take are certainly not created by us or created by you, they're, most all of them have state statute behind any of your activities and your job is to implement that law. And again, I just think, all of the conversation, what Commissioner Peters asked about and what we've just gone through, I think is important for residents to feel, to feel confident that their system is a good one here and that the folks that are working with you are doing the job that they have a passion to do, to do it right and to be accessible to all voters. So I just wanted to go through that, I appreciate your time, thanks.
Thank you. And I, yes, in Florida law, we have Florida law, but I would just like to add that it is, as supervisors of elections, it is our duty, our personal duty and responsibility to ensure the integrity of an electoral process. I don't believe that I would need a law to make sure that we were conducting elections fairly, securely, and accurately. So I think that that's just very important to understand, that we have staff and we have people who are committed to this process in the state of Florida.
Anything further? All right. Thank you, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you very much.
Always great to see you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Burton, what's next? Julie, you can feel free to hang out the rest of the day, listen to the budget presentations, you're more than welcome.
Thanks for getting the seat warm, Julie.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, Commissioners, and good morning, Mr. Burton. I know I just saw you all last week, so I'll be much more concise and shorter today. As you all know, our duties as the, as a constitutionally elected property appraiser is to deliver a fair and equitable tax rule each year and obviously administer all of the various exemptions, Homestead being the biggest, and then the other various personal exemptions that may apply to particular individuals. And then we also maintain the tax parcel maps, that system, that whole GIS system, and we work closely with the county's AEGIS Enterprise GIS as well. So with that in mind, our budget is designed to basically support those actions and 90% of our budget is personnel services, which is probably not a big shocker. So only about 10% of our budget even is used towards operating expenses. With that in mind, we are only, we are up, our request this year is up about 3.2% from last year and that is predominantly a function of general increase in personnel services. Obviously, if the general increase is determined to be something different, then that would obviously oscillate with that request. No real big surprising things in our budget, but happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Questions?
Trying to get you some time back here. And I don't like to keep the sheriff waiting.
The gift of time is always appreciated. All right, sir. Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here this morning.
Thank you all.
Mr. Burton.
Okay, there we go, now we're on. So is there a clicker for the PowerPoint presentation or does somebody have that loaded up there? It's real short, it's just a few slides, but I thought it'd be easier just to use the visual. Yeah, thanks, Chris. So even I can figure out this one, the right one means forward and the left one means reverse. So real simply, in our budget this year, there are no new initiatives. I'll just call this the year of the individual, the year of the person, the year of the employees. What's really important this year is we take care of the people, is they're facing all the fiscal challenges they face with inflation. Pretty much the entire increase, absent increases in operating costs, keeping the doors open, the lights on, the increases in the contracts, is all going toward people. So as you can see up here, the change in our adopted budget from last year, 348 is the adopted budget and the target's 360. The net general fund request is 319 million. That means we're generating of our own revenue outside the general fund, $41.2 million. We've had success in increasing that over the last few years and you can see the net increase over the last two years is $5.5 million that we've been able to increase. increase over the last two years is $5.5 million that we've been able to increase. And that's primarily coming from city contracts, ancillary services that we provide to the cities, and housing federal inmates, and other contracts that we have that we generate revenue. So, we're able to offset what you all fund by this year, coming up the 41 million, which is an increase of over $5.5 million for two years. And we'll continue to work on that, to do everything we can to increase those revenues outside the general fund. As I said, most of our increase is absorbed by inflation costs. We did see, in our major contracts, and we have hundreds of contracts, as you can imagine, and they go into operating and capital, primarily in the operating component of our budget. And we did see an increase of about 7.5% in the large contracts. Again, there's no new initiative funding for FY '23, and we really making an effort, again, to contain these costs, but still, make sure that we're providing the adequate level of services and maintain the services, but frankly, also to increase services. If you recall, last year, and again, I'm very thankful for it, you all agreed to permanently fund the mental health unit within the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. We had done a pilot. We had added crisis response specialists, teamed with deputies for a co-response model. It worked very well. The data and the metrics that we presented last year showed that it was effective, and I asked you to fund it permanently, which you did. So, what that's resulted in is those teams being able to take calls that the patrol deputies didn't have to take. So, what I'm doing is reallocating resources from the regular patrol deputies, and now, we are expanding the mental health unit without asking for any additional funding, because we're able to save in one direction and add in the other. And we're in the process of adding three teams, three crisis response specialists and three deputies. And soon, hopefully, within the next 30 days, we'll be expanding the mental health unit co-response model to the Wellman area. The goal is, is eventually to expand it throughout the county. And I'll continue to use that model of trying to save on one side and move it over to the other to expand this without coming back to you. I can't guarantee you that that's going to happen, but we'll continue to look at the data if it's possible to do that. But eventually, over the next year or two years, I think that we would all benefit from this being expanded throughout the county. But we'll continue to try and do it internally without asking for more funding. So, I think that's something I'm really excited about, because I know that it's working, and it's providing a better service to the community with better outcomes.
Sheriff, if you don't mind, Commissioner Long has a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sheriff, but that tickled a little thought in my head when you said you'd like to expand it throughout the county. Do you know if some of the other law enforcement agencies within the county are also trying to do the same thing?
Yeah. The St. Petersburg Police Department has a different model. It's, I'll call it an independent response model. It's called the Call Program that they have in St. Pete. So, they don't team officers with the mental health professionals. The mental health professionals in the city of St. Pete are responding on their own. They have a series, or a list of calls and incidents, that when they receive them, that they'll send out the mental health professional in lieu of an officer. Both models are acceptable throughout the country. There's a lot of research being done now, and in fact, there's some grants that are out there for educational institutions to do some really heavy research on this, to look at those two models. So, we're using the co-response model, St. Pete's using an independent response model. And as part of our program, we're also partnering with the city of Clearwater. So, we employ a couple of crisis response specialists that are teamed with Clearwater officers, and so, that co-response model is also in the city of Clearwater. Clearwater is paying for those through a contract with us, so they're absorbing and picking up their own costs, but it's a partnership. Also, Largo has a similar co-response model in a contract that they have with a local provider. But I'm talking to Chief Unsted now, and there's a chance that they may join onto our program. So, it is being done in other areas throughout the county with some of the city police departments. And again, I think that it's, with ours, I'd like to see it expand, not just throughout our entire service area, which we're not in right now, but even into some of those cities that don't have it at the moment.
Thank you.
So, we have total of just under 1,500 deputy sheriff positions. We have 75 openings, vacancy rate about 5%. And attrition is high. It's one of the questions that people often ask, is because of the current climate, is that where are we? And in 2021, we lost more than we have over the last few years. We lost 145 deputies. And probably, what's most concerning about that trend is, is that nobody's leaving for other agencies. They're leaving to get out of law enforcement. For the first time, we saw more quitting than retiring. You're going to have normal attrition, especially with that number of deputies that we have, and we anticipate that and plan for that. But what you can't plan for is those that just wake up one morning and say, I'm done with this, and I'm out of here. And what we see is, is they're getting into, they're leaving the area, they're moving, and in many cases, they're just getting out of law enforcement altogether, going into everything from the restaurant business to dog grooming businesses to other things that we see. So, that is a problem. And as I'll mention here in a second, we have to make sure that we provide the best environment we can to retain and recruit, and make sure that we're able to retain and recruit the best of the best. Because everybody out there is facing the same thing, and I say everybody, I mean, all the law enforcement agencies, and we're all seeking the same people, which is the best of the best. We are having success in recruiting from up north. We're seeing officers that are applying to us, but same thing that Clearwater's seeing, and St. Pete's seeing, and Tampa's seeing, and all the other agencies. We're hiring people from Chicago, and from New York, and from Atlanta, and Philadelphia, and all the places. And we're having to, though, we're having to offer, because everybody's doing it, and we're having to offer hiring bonuses, and pay moving expenses, and bring them in with experience pay. But if you want the best of the best, that's what you have to do, because you have to remain competitive. So, the last couple of years, you can see, is that the numbers are up. Attrition in 2020 was 100, in 2018, it was 132, and as I just said, in 2021, we lost 145. So, and this year, it's, you know, on pace for right around that number. We just had, you know, yesterday, I just got an update, and just in the last week or so, people that have put in notices of separation were losing nine deputies just in the last week. So, and we're hiring, but we're hiring less than what's leaving. So, we'll keep at it, but we're okay, but it's a continual challenge. So, that takes us to having to remain competitive, so that we can retain and recruit the best, and to get people in the door that are going to provide the level of service, and you've got to take care of your people. And so, as the largest law enforcement agency in Pinellas County, unfortunately, is that, again, because this is just a cycle, is that we found ourselves in a situation where we were really the least paid for starting salary at the major agencies. So, right now, our starting salary is 51,728. Largo's starting at 58, and Clearwater at 59, St. Pete at 58, and Tampa's starting at 60. So, come October 1st, we're going to raise the starting salary to be competitive, because we can't be here and recruit and retain. It's impossible. And so, we're going to re, we're going to increase the starting salary to 57,2, and the top end will be 86,5. But as you can see, is that being market competitive, when you do that analysis and you look at it, it still doesn't make us market competitive throughout the entire pay plan that we have. Now, we have a contract with the PBA, they are the collective bargaining agent, we have a collective bargaining agreement for the deputies. So, we are in the process of negotiations with them now, but I'm confident that this is what will happen come October 1st. But you can see, a St. Pete Police Department sergeant starts at 93, and a sheriff's office sergeant starts at 80. That's a $13,000 difference. That's a real gap. St. Pete lieutenant starts at 116, and the sheriff's office lieutenant starts at 93. So, my goal is, is not to be the highest paid, but my goal absolutely, and we have to be competitive. And we've got to stay market competitive, or we're just not going to retain and recruit people. So, that's why I'm putting, really, all of the resources, all of our increase this year, absent what we have to, to absorb the increased costs in contracts, the increased operating costs that you have to pay, because the costs are going up in the contract. Everything else is going into personal services, take care of the people. And that's why, and I said originally, this is really the year of the employee, as far as the sheriff's office is concerned, because we have to take care of the people. For the non-sworn, we're going to, in every two years, we go out and do a market analysis through our Human Resources Bureau, and as we all know, is that the market is competitive, as everybody is trying to recruit and retain. So, as we looked at, and all the positions, come October 1st, we have pay grades, it's not a step plan for the non-sworn, but we have pay grades. And within those pay grades, all of the ranges in those pay grades, so the starting and the top, are all going to move up 4%. And that's just based upon a market analysis and a need to remain market competitive. That doesn't necessarily affect the pay of the individual employees unless you're at the bottom, or you're at the top, because those pay ranges move. If you're in the middle, that 4% doesn't help you, but it does help us to bump up the starting pay in order to get people in as we try to recruit. The non-sworn personnel are going to receive a 5% pay increase, but importantly, it's 5% from midpoint. So, it's not 5% for everybody. There's a big difference with that, and it's often misunderstood. So, when you're talking about 5% from midpoint, very, very simply, and this is not the case, but if a pay range is 20 to 40, midpoint is 30. So, everybody in that paying, pay range is getting 5% of 30. So, if you're making $22,000, you're getting 5% of 30. If you're making $38,000, you're still getting 5% of 30. So, the less you make, the higher the percentage you're getting, and the people at the top end are getting less. And what it's designed to do is to give more to the people that are making less, and, but also recognize the service to the people at the top end, but it makes it affordable, because there's no way that we could afford, if we did 5% for everybody across the board, that number is astronomical, you can't do it. So, it's 5% from midpoint. But again, is that, that helps to take care of the people, and it's market competitive.
Commissioners, we use the same model.
One of the areas that we just ran into and are running into, just a absolutely huge problem with, is with nurses at the jail. So, the inmate population at the jail stays around 3,000 inmates. We have 368-bed medical facility with doctors, nurses, psychiatrists, dentists. We do everything there from dialysis to x-rays to sutures, you name it. We try and keep the inmates out of the hospital, because that's where the really high costs are. For the practitioners up, so that means the APRNs and the physicians, is we contract that out with a provider, but everybody else is an employee of the sheriff's office. So, all the nurses, all the RNs, LPNs, et cetera, are all employees of the sheriff's office. And we found ourselves in a situation where it was untenable. We were getting into a crisis situation, because the pay outside the jail by all the medical providers, by the hospitals, was just skyrocketing. And we had people leaving left and right, because they're chasing the dollars. So, we have to increase the nurse pay to remain competitive. This is the only request outside the budget target that I have, and it's just essential. We can't do, we can't do without it, and so, there's a need for an additional $1.2 million. We have 67 LPN positions and 48 RN positions. The pay was 47 to 76. That was the pay range. We went out and did a market analysis on it, and we were way low. And again, we just couldn't recruit. And even trying to go to the LPN schools, whether it's the public colleges and universities, or the private ones that are out there, is that people were just making so much money. We had people going to Tampa General, and going to Bakersfield, going to Bayfront, going to HCA, going here and there, and they're just walking out. So, and we couldn't get anybody to come in. So, going out to the market and raising the pay, again, the RN, 61 to 97. And so, the new pay range is 80 to 102. And for the LPNs, the new pay range is 55 to 80. One of the things we found we had to do as well, is also to have contracts with retention payments, and ask these people not to leave. So, we had to provide some incentive for them to stay with retention contracts, but that is that they have to stay for a series of years, and if they leave during those years under the contract, then they have to pay back the amount. We're also having to do hiring bonuses as well, to get these people in, and also education reincentive. But I'm not asking for funding for any of that. We'll absorb that, we'll figure that out within the budget. The only thing I'm asking for is what it's going to cost, because when you bump up the starting pay to, from 47 to 76, and from 61 to 97, then the next thing you have to do is deal with pay compression. Because if you bring in all these people, and you bumped up the pay, and everybody else in the system, you have to bump up everybody else, otherwise, they'll end up bunched up, and you have an untenable problem. So, we have to increase the pay for everybody, or again, also, because we're going to lose them, they're going to walk out, because they're getting these higher salaries elsewhere. So, again, the ask is, for this 1.2 million beyond our 23 target, and it's solely just to deal with this nursing issue at the jail. That's the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Commissioner Flowers has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sheriff, for staying in the lane with providing the mental health services component piece, because that helps by not putting individuals in the jail who really probably shouldn't be in jail, they should be in treatment. So, that helps also with the ratios there. I serve on the board for HCA, so hopefully, HCA Hospital, so hopefully, we're starting to see some of the nurses come back, because they were being paid astronomical dollar values. I've shared with this board how much my niece was offered as a traveling nurse, and she made more money in two months than she would have made in an entire year, making about $10,000 a week as a traveling nurse. Now, she's back home, so she's looking for employment on the center of your way. She's an RN. She's a RN.
We need them.
But I think you, we are hopeful that we'll start to see, because now, those nurses aren't traveling as much because of the numbers of COVID, even though we've had some spikes, it's nowhere near what it was before. So, hopefully, that'll help with what you're doing. And I'm really glad to see that we're looking at, as you said, not chasing, but just trying to stay competitive. I look at all the time when they post the graduation classes from the officers for the sheriff's department, and from St. Pete PD and others, and so, I'm always like counting, you know, how many, how many it is. I don't know how many started, but, you know, we could see how many actually finished, finished the race. Excuse me. And the last thing I want to ask is, are you seeing your medical costs increase based on patient need for those in, that are incarcerated, that have more acute medical issues and concerns? Are you seeing an increase in that?
Yeah, of course. You know, costs are up, but we try and really contain those costs by minimally sending people out to the hospital, and we've been able to very successfully negotiate contracts with medical providers. It's a complicated formula that we use, but I'm happy to offline and tell you about it if you want. But just suffice it is, is that we generally are able to get Medicaid rates with the hospitals and with the providers, which keeps our costs low. We spend about $21 million a year in jail medical costs, and the majority of that is in that medical facility and the hospital costs. But at any given time, and it varies, but I'd say as an average, we average about four or five inmates at the hospital at any given time that are constantly out of the hospital, which means they're getting in hospital services, and we have to have people there to watch them in the hospital. So, we are seeing an increase, but it's not astronomical because of the success we've had in negotiating these Medicaid, or Medicaid plus a percentage contracts. If it wasn't for that, I think we'd have a major issue.
Okay.
Because I see the cost, because I see the bills, but then, they discount it. So, I know that we're having success with these contracts.
And just in case, if anyone didn't know, the city of St. Pete put out an RFP when they, the city of St. Pete Police Department, put out an RFP when they were looking to partner with a provider, and the provider that won that contract was Gulf Coast Community and Jewish Family Services, they've changed their name again. And so, they respond, like the sheriff was saying, to try to help with individuals who have those mental health issues that may be wandering or whatever, and of course, their wandering gets them into mischief, which then get them arrested. But what I've also noticed, when I'm driving down 34th Street, is I've seen them at some of the hotels, certain hotels along 34th Street. So, they are actually trying to go out and target persons who they see, and then trying to get them ventured in the services. So, hopefully, that'll help reduce with call volume from businesses and things of that nature, when the individuals are loitering, or, you know, doing whatever that they're doing. So, I'm grateful for both programs, because you don't have the shift, you know, somebody leaves St. Pete, they go over to another area that the sheriff does. The sheriff also has the services, so I'm grateful for that. Thank you very much for your services. And the last thing I want to say is, I'm always grateful for your police outreach services with Officer Lawson and others, who partner with schools and community organizations or whatever, they have a presence in the community, getting out, talking to the residents, establishing those relationships. I had some folk... some folks in Clearwater, in the Greenwood area, talk about an event that they had, and some sheriff officers came. And I know a lot of things go on in a number of our municipalities where the sheriff comes and participates, even though that may not be an area that you service, but they're still coming out and participating. So just, you know, super kudos to that because that goes a long way with establishing those relationships and that trust and the bond. So thank you for that.
Yep, you're welcome.
One of these days, too, I want to see if I can, I'm not getting on the helicopter.
Yeah.
I'm cheeky. I'm just going to admit it. But I would like to travel on something else and just to see how they, I'm not doing that, girl, no.
You got a couple of boats you can come in.
I have two boats.
Yeah. Come on out. July 4th.
I have two boats, but I love chicken.
Commissioner Peters has been out of the boat a couple of times.
I'm on a great line. I get on my boat, this whole thing. Trust me, you're powerful. The helicopter will be off before he lets me off.
Well, anytime, you're more than welcome. And, you know, over that July 4th weekend, if you, that is a good time to get out. There's a lot going on in the waterway, and we'll have a lot of boats out there. But I know you said Commissioner Peters has been out, and some of you have, but you're, you're always welcome.
Commissioner Jordan.
Just wanted to say thank you for absorbing the costs and, you know, expanding your services, too. I think you're doing an incredible job. Just wanted to ask about the COVID situation in the jail. Is it better or worse?
It, it's better. It peaked again. We had, we opened it up for volunteers, religious volunteers, professional services and everybody. And then all of a sudden, it spiked. We got up to a point where we had about 40 inmates, so I just shut everything down again. But we're down to, I think today, we're about 25. So it's going in the right direction. It's going down. Probably about another week or so, 10 days, we'll take a look at it and then make a decision with the eye towards opening it up. But we had a big spike with inmates and staff. We just re-implemented all of our protocols we did before to contain it. And so it's going in the right direction. It's going down.
You're probably doing better than we are, actually. We've had an epidemic here.
Yeah.
Commissioner Eggers, I can't see you. I don't know if you have a question.
Well, I, I, I know I don't. I just really wanted to tell, I think Commissioner Flowers made a couple of comments about the sheriff's participation. Guys and gals get out in the community, I think, are just first rate. And especially, kudos to the canine. Every time that the canines enter the room, it becomes all about the dogs and nothing else. But, but they, but they certainly send the message, and kids or adults or everybody in between are very attentive to those presentations. But anyway, great work. Keep up the good, the good side. I love the, the joint effort that you're making in the community with the nurses and the officers. I kind of tend to like that model a little better. It makes me feel a little safer for the, you know, unexpected that can happen. But in any event, I'm glad that there's research going on on both models to see which one, I guess, works best. But anyway, I really appreciate that, that effort. Thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner Long.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you'll have an answer for this one, but Commissioner Flowers reminded me of the time when I went out on one, on your big new, that fabulous boat. What do you, what are your deputies that are on the water, are they involved at all in some of the tragedies that we've seen at the, at John's Pass and that canal?
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much all us down there. You know, as far as the marine enforcement goes and marine safety and law enforcement presence on the water, you know, throughout Pinellas County, it is primarily us. It's primarily the sheriff's office. Clearwater has a limited presence, St. Pete has a limited presence, and same thing with Treasure Island. So our marine facility is in Indian Shores. That's where the main facility is. But we have boats throughout the county. We have boats at marinas in Dunedin, down in St. Pete Beach. In fact, we're getting ready to put one down in the St. Pete Municipal Marina Downtown, so we can cover Tampa Bay and have quick access. So primarily, everything that happens there in John's Pass, which is just a, it's a, it's a tough place. It's a very dangerous place, is all those water rescues are us down there. FWC has a presence. They do what they can, but again, they're very limited in staffing. And so that is all us down there. It's all the sheriff's office in that area.
Is there anything you see or that your deputies see that can be done down there to make it a little more secure? Keep people off that sand thing that's developed down there?
You know, really, unfortunately, I don't know that there is. There's people jumping off of boats and getting swept in that current down there where they just shouldn't be doing that. And, you know, getting, or launching off of the shoreline and getting out there and then just being swept out because those currents are so strong. So I don't know if there's anything we can do other than what we continue to do, which is educate people and tell them, don't do it. But, you know, things happen. So that's where the helicopter comes in and the marine unit, and that's how we have the success in the water rescues. And, you know, unfortunately, that's also where, we're also doing the recoveries of the bodies when they get swept out and they go down and pop up a couple of days later. You know, we had one not too long ago where the, a young, young guy who fell victim to that and just shouldn't have been out there at all at the beginning. So.
So do you feel that you now have the, your sufficient amount of staff and boats on the wa, I mean, we have so much water around Pinellas.
Yeah. And, and thanks to you all, last year, you know, I asked for an increase last year, so we do now have seven-day-a-week coverage, and we're covering both sides, the east and the west side, meaning Tampa Bay and the Gulf. And I feel that we're in good shape. I think we're in a good situation. We'll continue to monitor it, look at the feedback from the deputies out there, look at the feedback from the citizens, look at the data, the metrics, and see from an enforcement standpoint, a call standpoint, where we are. But I'm comfortable right now with it. We're in a good place with it. The other thing we've also been able to do, you talk about, you know, I talk about, you know, maintaining, but also increasing services, is that we've had great success with the derelict vessels and have been able to really clean that up out there. I think we've got a really good model that we're using now with that. Partnering, the county's been helpful, various folks have been helpful with a state contract. We had to pay for it originally for some reasons to get these boats out of here, the derelict vessels. But now through county and through Kelly's team and using some state money to get those out. So we're on top of that with all those derelict vessels. And, you know, the feedback from the public is good. And in fact, we're getting inquiries from other counties that have water responsibilities up and down the west coast of Florida that want to know how we're doing it. It's just because we made a determination that we were going to fix this problem, and we'll share with them some of the things we're doing. So that's working out well.
And how about the helicopters? You mentioned helicopters. Have we got our, aren't we getting a new one?
So the newest one should be in about three weeks. It, it was built out in Texas, and then it went to an upfitting place in Louisiana. In fact, our folks are getting ready to fly out there in a couple of weeks and pick it up and fly it back. So we were able to, if you recall, the cost of that helicopter was about 6.2 million. We were able to sell the current one that we had that we're replacing for about 600,000. So that'll offset that. And we'll send the check to Chris, you know, for that 600,000 as soon as we sell. We have a contract for it. So as soon as we get that, we'll get that check up to you all. But that should be here in a couple of weeks.
And wouldn't it be just lovely if we had a new hanger to put it in?
Oh, yeah. We don't, we probably don't want to go there.
No, I just couldn't help myself. I'm sorry.
We probably don't want to have that.
Commissioner.
Barry probably doesn't want me to even begin on that one. Because I can really, anyway, we won't talk about it.
Commissioner Flowers, brand-new helicopter? Can we talk you into a brand-new helicopter?
Yeah, it's brand-new.
Commissioner Peters.
Hi, Sheriff, as always, good to see you. Before I moved here in the late 70s, there used to be signs in the channel, so where Krabby Bills is right now at John's Pass. There used to be signs there and on the other side as well, in the water, that's, and there were large signs, like the no-ake signs, that said, "Dangerous Current, No Swimming." Is that a fish and wildlife thing to get those, if we wanted to get those replaced? They were on pylons. They were closer to the shore. They weren't in the channel. And they were extremely legible from anywhere you were when that was that one-time kingfish. And, and I know that there really are not signs on those rocks. And I understand that gentleman that perished was swimming out to the green buoy, and it was just a little too much alcohol was involved. But is, to get those signs back in there placed in on pylons, is that fish and wildlife's responsibility? Is that ours? Is that Coast Guard? Whose responsibility would that be?
I really don't know, to tell you the truth. I would imagine it's got to have probably all of the above. And I imagine the Coast Guard probably has some say in it because you're putting, you know, permanent signs there in the waterway. It's probably a combination. I mean, we can look into it. I just don't know. It's not, it's not ours.
Yeah, they were there in the late 70s. They were there. Late 70s, early 80s, they were there. And they just aren't anymore. And, you know, there could be signs, and we, we also could put signs on that bottom half of that bridge or the state can that says, you know, not to be on those bridge things. But, but that current is bad, and it's worse out on the Gulf side than it is on the base side, you know, on the, on the intercoastal side. But, you know, I know your officers, when I went out with them a couple of weeks ago, you know, they're really concerned about that whole, that whole area, and they just feel that there isn't appropriate signage, and that nobody should be going in that water from the rocks. And, and unfortunately, those gentlemen went in the water from the rocks. So, and not even the sand side. So I, you know, I know that's not your jurisdiction, but I thought those in the intercoastal, but just wasn't sure whose jurisdiction that was.
I'll look into it all, you know. I'm just not sure.
And Commissioners, I, I did discuss that with the city manager there, and I know that he was working on additional signage. I don't know exactly where, but we can also just be aware. He'll follow up with him.
Yeah, the signage that's on the side where the sand is creeped in by the restaurants and everything, you're talking a giant bridge structure, and the sign is like this big. It's, I mean, it's, it's useless. Where folks are, and I'll send you a picture I took last time. Mine was John's Pass. There's people fishing. There's people, you know, it's, the little tiny sign is ignored.
Yeah, they, they really.
It's behind them. It's on the, it's on the wall.
It's on the actual bridge pylon structure.
But that was what I asked. I asked him to do more signage, I mean, following that latest incident. And he said they were working on it, but I'll have, you know, I'll follow up on that.
Anything further?
I just want, I just wanted to tag on that, that last conversation. And I do think that the signage is a big problem. When I was out there, too, a few weeks back, the sign on the beach itself is so close to the rocks, so that when you get down to the sign and see it, and it is about the size of your iPad, you really are almost too far. You're almost too close already. So I think there needs to be something on the beach as well because it really becomes very calming waters until you get to a point, and it's, and then you've got all the currents involved. So thank you, Commissioner Peters, for bringing that up. And then I was just going to talk a little bit about the questions that Commissioner Long asked on the helicopter. So thank you for addressing that. And Commissioner Flowers, you would absolutely enjoy it. I'm not great with it, but when you get up there, it's another world, and you, you get to see the Pinellas County like you've never seen it. So it's a really, really great experience if you get a chance. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner Eggers. Anything else? Again, Sheriff, we appreciate all you do. Appreciate the partnership, and thanks for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burton, what's next?
Next up, we have, next up.
We have the clerk of the circuit court, Mr. Ken Burke.
No, you need to press the little button there. There you go.
That one?
Good morning.
Good morning, once again, Commissioners. It's good to be with you here today. It's good to see the attorney who represents the clerk's office here, Amanda. Thank you. Good to see you. I want to start off the presentation by, it's a little bit sentimental because this is, in all my years of presenting, Commissioner Seal has always been here. And you have served Pinellas County extremely well for 23 years as a commissioner, three years prior to that in the City of Clearwater as a commissioner there, and really a lifetime of service. I know you're president of Junior League and very involved with Junior League in Clearwater. And her historical perspective to this commission has been so valued. And you have contributed so much. I never really had the chance to meet your dad, but I know your mom was extremely proud of you and all the public service that you, you have given. And she was a special lady. And just, we're going to miss you here. And also, though, I think you can look back and, and as a commissioner, leave a certain legacy. And I think about the days when people used to have the bumper stickers on their car saying, "Pray for me, I drive US 19." And I think about Commissioner Seal and her tremendous contribution to making that pathway from just north of Park Boulevard to just south of Curlew Road, something that's wonderful now. And our traffic situation's so much better than it was. And then what's happening at 118th and Olmerton and East Bay, and I know you had your strong fingerprints and all of that, and worked with the feds, the state, local, to coordinate all that effort. So I just want to say thank you for your tremendous service. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and I wish you the best. I know you're going to spend a lot of time with two granddaughters and continue to spoil them. So God bless you on, and Ron on your retirement from, from public service. And thank you. I also want to thank Thomas Dunn, our budget person in the clerk's office, Chris, who we've worked with. I see Abigail back there. Abigail, we appreciate you and our, our budget formulation with the county. And of course, your county administrator, Barry Burton. Barry's a pleasure to work with. He's a straight shooter. It's good that we're able to exchange in questions and thoughts and get straight answers back so that we can move along. It's not always the answer I want, but it's a good answer. You want an answer, and Barry's excellent at doing that. And so what we put together is a budget which conforms with our budget target. We, we do have a decision package, but the decision package, I'll tell you, is in flux right now because one of the things that I brought to you in the past is that the demand for people in the financial arena is tremendous. And as a result, we've asked HR to do a study on the finance salaries, where that's our, probably our biggest area of turnover, our biggest area of losing people, and the biggest area that we have of concern of attracting people. Our salaries are just not competitive. And so that's the only part that's a decision package in here. It's not a firm number because we're working with the HR in finalizing that. They gave us an initial draft, but it's just an additional draft that, that needs some additional work to it. As far as the, the rest of our budget, I'm not going to go through the details in my slide presentation. You have the slides about what, what are the different departments that make up the clerk's office and our budget requests. It's in compliance with the target. I do want to brag, though, on some good news, that, you know, we work again with OMB, and the clerk's office has the, you know, we probably the most dependent as far as partnerships in, in carrying out our duties in the finance area. We celebrate that we were able to save the taxpayers a hundreds of thousands of dollars through the bond renewal that we did. We went to a, what was called a Cinderella bond. It sounds more sexy than it is. And then we had a recent continuation of that with your chair, Chairman Justice, and I just signed the paperwork and Barry last week on that to further save additional money. And that was a result of decisions that were made a while back that allowed us to make this good decision. And so if you look at our overall debt portfolio in Pinellas County and the interest rates we have, I would challenge any government entity to compete with us as far as the lowest possible rates that we have out there. Of course, we don't have an extreme amount of debt. All our debt is tied to sewer, as far as sewer debt. And that's a good thing, and the enterprise funds. The other thing probably this year, we're, we're going to be looking at a, an aggressiveness as far as our, with interest rates, as far as the investments. And we should be looking at higher dollar amounts, where you've seen what the Fed has done recently, and that will have an impact eventually. It's a lagging impact, but it's happening now on return our investments. We approximately have, at this time, it's a little bit less than what your presentation shows. It's around $1.6 billion of investments. Obviously, the, the key there is preservation of capital first, liquidity, and then yields always third in that. We have to make sure that every dollar, we, collective tax dollars, is available for the taxpayers of Pinellas County. So really, that's my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. I'm not going to go through the slides, as I mentioned.
Questions for the clerk. Commissioner Eggers, do you have anything?
Yeah, just real quickly, I, I, you know, your entire department always, obviously, is always run in top, top form. Ken, I appreciate all the work that goes on there. Maybe you could speak just briefly again, for residence sake more than anything, but the, the IG department that you have and their responsibilities to the residents, as far as, you know, accountability, ethics, and all of that go within the operating group, operating groups of Pinellas County departments?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Eggers. We have 12 inspector general people in our office who do investigations, who do internal audits. We get, we have a hotline that's available for citizens to report concerns about county government. Some of the concerns come from employees. It could be anonymous, or it could be, list your name. We also have a regular schedule of internal audits, which we get suggestions from the county commission from. We get it from the administrator, and then also, we ourselves look at high-risk areas. It's very professionally done, and I'm glad you asked about this, Commissioner Eggers, because sometimes it's misleading as to how an internal audit works. When we do internal audits of county departments, it's a very transparent process. It's a process of no surprises. We go in there, we meet with the staff originally at, in, at a of no surprises. We go in there, we meet with the staff originally at a opening interview. We go over what the intent of our audit will be. We have to gain a knowledge of that department in order to properly do that audit under the inspector general standards. And then as we go about our audit, we communicate constantly with the department. If we have a finding, it's not a surprise. We talk to the department right away and say, this is our finding. Please comment on it. And the best thing a department can do, if they agree with the finding, is start working on improving the control, implementing an internal control so that by the time the audit comes out, and their response, they could say, we've already not only agreed with this, we've taken corrective action to make it happen. And so it's a partnership. And it's a partnership, you know, Commissioner Seal, you can appreciate this, because it always wasn't a partnership. Sometimes the county departments resisted this tremendously. But over time, I think they've seen the integrity of the way we operate, the standards that we observe as inspector generals. And then there's been tremendous cooperation. If I had to point to any friction over the past five or six years, I really can't. It's worked as it's supposed to. And this is the same, you know, you hear at the federal level, what's happening with the FBI and that whole Russian investigation. Who does that investigation? It's the inspector general for the FBI. So this is the recognized governmental way of good government, of having an independent entity which does these types of investigations and audits, and publishes then the results. And all our results are published and available to the taxpayers to see. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, thank you, Ken. I appreciate that. And I also think it is probably one of the big reasons why the audits that are done by outside independent auditors turn out so well. I mean, not only are you all involved in the process, but you've had some internal eyes that have looked at some issues that have gotten fixed and righted, because most of the times, it's just about that. It's not that there's anything untoward going on, but there may be processes and procedures have to be tightened up. And when you do that, audits become cleaner. So I just really wanted to take that moment to explain that process. I thank you for mentioning the hotline. I think that's extremely important for our residents to know that it exists. It's there for you out there to, if you see things going on that you have concerns about, please contact us. And then finally, I would just say, I've appreciated all of your heartfelt comments towards Commissioner Seal. So thank you for that. Thank you for all of your work there, Ken.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything further?
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate it.
All right, Commissioners, last up is the Board of County Commissioners' budget.
And just FYI, looking at the clock, we are not ordering lunch, so guide your questions and comments on this item, last item of the day accordingly.
We should be done well before.
Yeah, we should be, we should be done well before. We might have to mute Commissioner Eggers, though.
I resemble that remark.
All right, Mr. Rose.
So Mr. Chair, Cecilia McCorkle from my office will be presenting on your budget. She is the budget analyst for you all.
Good morning. So you obviously know what your department purpose is. I'll skip over that on the document. Your budget numbers are on page two of the document, and that's what I'll be referring to as I'm walking through the first page. Overall, the total district budgets are increasing by $90,430, which is about 4% for FY '23. This includes each of the districts, as well as the shared cost center. And that shared cost center, as a reminder, includes some of your non-discretionary items, such as your cost plans, computer replacements, that type of thing. And then some of your shared costs, such as, you know, shared equipment that you may have on the office floor and supplies. And then you each have your individual cost centers. The personal services is where your increase is for FY ' '23. I've built in a 2% increase. As we do in prior years, we usually look at an average of what your increase is, or sometimes decreases, over the past few years, and come up with an assumption. As you're aware, they don't publish the increases or the salary changes for constitutional officers until September, which doesn't really fall into our budget timeline very well. So we use that assumption, which knock on wood, has worked well for us for the past few years. Your staff has the 3% pay adjustment included in their salaries. And then the remainder of the adjustment is for your benefit costs related to salaries.
That'll be adjusted if we do something different.
Yes.
Yeah. All the budgets, all the budgets in all the departments are based upon a standard 3%. As I roll out my budget recommendation, we'll adjust it to, in line with the salary recommendations.
Okay. Commissioner Long has a question.
Yes, just for my personal knowledge, Barry, when, I think you've shared this, but when are you going to come back to us with that?
July 19th.
That's the big day. Plan for lunch, okay?
We're meeting Monday to finalize decision packages and, because we've got to start publishing and get all the budget books and everything amended here early July. So yeah, we're at decision point. And frankly, you know, we're going to meet and defer, but we're ready.
Carry on.
Thank you. There were no FTE changes for the, for the year, and that actually has been quite flat at 15 for the past several years. So you haven't had any increases there. Your operating budget has decreased, and by 12.5%, which is equal to about $13,000. As you're aware, you provided a target at the beginning of the budget development. This year, it was $11,050 per center. That does not include your personnel costs. Your personnel costs are a part of that shared cost center, which is good, because $11,000 probably wouldn't get you very far. But in, all of the districts came in at or below target. Two came in below target, and those were Districts Four and Five. And then moving on to decision packages, there were three decision packages that were submitted for consideration by the board. The first was the Feast Food Pantry, and that was a non-recurring cost of $250,000. The second one listed is a Sustainability and Resiliency Organizational Framework. I did not have the cost listed on here, but staff has estimated it at this time being around $97,000 as a recurring cost. And then the third one is the Clearwater Transit Center, an initial ferry network investment of $15 million, which is a non-recurring cost.
So if I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to kind of walk through each one of these. So the first item, which is the Feast Food Pantry, we're recommending that be put into the competitive process that we just contracted for. And I think that was the intent. You just wanted to make sure that it was covered.
It wa, thank you, Barry, for letting me address that. Yes, it was, Barry, number one. But number two, I, we keep getting kind of a no answer when we ask when that's going to be ready, when those applications will be ready. So I want to make sure that when you come back with your recommendations, do you think we'll be ready then to start the application process?
Well, we're meeting, again, the contract process, you know, took longer than it should have, okay? And we owned that. But we needed someone to work and work through these grant processes. These grant processes, as you've seen over the past several years, I mean, they're very, very cumbersome. Not only, so for instance, let's just take a simple thing like food, this food pantry wants to do an addition. I don't know what they want to do, but let's just, for assumption purposes. Okay, now, our criteria and the group, okay, so Dugan's group, they're going to not only have to work with them to make, to use criteria, and they're going to bring back to you, then we're going to evaluate it, we're going to select that. Now they've got to, they've got to make sure that that meets its bid in the federal, under the federal criteria, that the reporting back to them is done throughout that construction period, and then the follow-up. So that contract goes for four years, because of all the reporting and follow-up. And I will tell you, working with nonprofits and stuff is a challenge to make sure you dot all the i's and cross the t's on these grants. So there's a lot of work involved in that. That's the reason we bid that out and didn't try to internalize it. It's not like the BP money, where you write a check and you give it to them, and they go, these have a lot of federal requirements. So we bid that out, and there wasn't anybody that bid on it. We thought Community Foundation was going to bid on that. So we privately negotiated and brought to you, and you approved that. So we're meeting, we're not wasting any time. We're, I think we're meeting next week. It's either next week or the following week with Dugan to get that going. It's next week. And so we're going to, we're going to, I want to, I want to talk to him. So I'm going to be actually involved in that meeting. I want to make sure we're on the same page, the timelines, the criteria. And so then they'll, they'll develop that, and then they'll get that out on the street. So it is going to take a little time, but we got to do this right. And, and, you know, it's got to follow that whole grant process. So, you know, again, these are one-time construction projects, so I understand there's a delay, and I know you wanted it earlier. But, but these are long-term investments, so.
Commissioner Girard.
So in the process, once we get the requests in, will there be some of our staff there looking at those to see if maybe, you know, maybe this would be better to be a CDBG request or something like that?
We will, and that's some of the discussion.
Especially with building stuff.
That's some of the discussion I want to have with Dugan in terms of that process. And I also want, it's going to be subject to your approval, obviously. So I just want to walk through all these pieces and make sure that we, you know, we're on sync before. Because we won't, we may have it on for a work session here on the 19th, or whatever that work session time period is. The staff was trying to put that on. I'm like, I'm not putting it on an agenda until I see it. And I walked through it. Otherwise, you're going to yell at me when we're missing pieces. So.
Who, who at this point, is it your administrative staff, or is it the foundation? I mean, we haven't talked about, at least I don't remember at a work session or anything, talking about what the criteria is, period.
Exactly. We want to join, we want to work on that criteria and bring it to you. And so it, so that hasn't occurred yet.
I just, yeah, I don't want going out there for an application with some kind of, something that might eliminate an applicant that we all think would be perfect, you know?
Well, first, it'll always be a recommendation to you, but we're going to bring you the criteria that we're going to evaluate against.
Okay. Because that's, and I know it's a recommendation, but if the form says XYZ can't apply, XYZ is not going to apply, and then we'll never see an application.
No, we want to get that to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Long.
Well, you just gave me an idea.
I'm sorry.
What do you mean, you're sorry? So, well, is there a way that we can also get the list of the folks that applied but were not accepted?
Well, yeah, we'll give you, we'll show you everything.
That takes care of your concern.
No, it's completely different.
Of course you would say that.
No, it is apples and oranges.
I understand. Somebody may not apply if the criteria is not set to where they would apply against. But we'll show you, we'll give you the recommendation, but we'll show you everybody that applied.
That's correct.
We'll see the criteria before.
Before it's released?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
But that addresses the first item.
Okay.
And I knew that that's the reason Commissioner Long asked for that item to be added. The second item is Sustainability and Resiliency Organizational Framework. And I had a discussion with Commissioner Long last night about that. And I know your concern is that, that we have a presence out in the community. I wanted to just walk through, and Jill maybe can come up and help me address this. But, you know, we're doing, we're doing a lot in sustainability and resiliency. Yes, Hank is the, you know, the quarterback on that. But, you know, we've got that embedded as kind of a way we do business. And that, that was done before Hank was here even. Hank's enhanced that, because we're working, you know, look at the, you've got every capital project that has to go through sea-level rice study, that's a million dollars or greater. You have efforts over, you added an energy manager under our asset management group that's going and looking at the way we manage our energy and how, and look at the program we did with Duke to buy clean energy. And so you've got all these different programs that are currently going, and they operate as a council. And so Hank drives that, he looks for grants. He does, he attends meetings and coordinates regionally with our other, our other cities. That's kind of a work in progress. That's always hard, because everybody kind of does their own particular programs, but they do collaborate regionally. So that's, that's our efforts. And we, and you've got a sustainability plan, they've got an action plan, they're implementing that. We're going to bring that revised plan to you sometime later this year.
July.
July?
July 28th.
So you're going to see that implementation plan, July when?
28th.
28th.
Work session.
Commissioner Long.
Yeah, and so I hear you saying that, Barry, and that's very important to me. As you know, it's important for our little ones, too. And the big issue that I have burning in my, my own agenda for this year and next is, is there anyone, anywhere in Pinellas County that is focused on the heat index? And the reason I ask that is because last year, the, I want to say it was either Broward or Dade County down there hired a heat index person, whose sole responsibility was to study that issue. And the fact that we all know, you know, our temperatures are rising, and our stor, just the whole thing that surrounds the issue of sustainability and resilience, really wraps around the climate, the ongoing storms that we have. But most importantly, those folks who work outside, or who have, we have a lot of county staff, whose work is done outside. And how is the unbelievable heat affecting their work, their health, our economy, for example, and those kinds of things? I think that's important for us to be able to monitor, just from a health perspective.
Sure. And you raised that issue before. I would have to defer to staff in terms of where that's at. But, but remember, we, so we have, we have a structure. We have an office that works on that. It's not an independent office. If that's what you're asking for, then that would be different, and they could collaborate around and do different things. But remember, you also have a, we have a contract where we can hire in expertise for our particular areas. And that's critical, because you can't have one, you know, if you're a sustainability person, well, you may have expertise in one area, but you're not going to have expertise in everything, you know? A solar person, you want an expert on solar. I want someone locally that can implement and coordinate, but then I want to hire out that specific expertise to do that analysis. And that's where our plan is built. And it's working. And again, you're going to see that coming up here at the July meeting, and how far we've gotten. That's the same thing when we looked at our fleet. That was huge, in terms of getting us not only to look at that, but operationally, how to effectuate that and be able to operate during a storm, and the infrastructure necessary. So I only posed that out because I wanted everybody to understand kind of what we're doing. And then if you're wanting to do something different, then I need, you know, to hear that.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
No, I'm thrilled at that, and I'm very proud of the work that we're doing as it relates to our fleet and how we're so focused and so measured in terms of not getting our head over our skis. And so I guess, as long as I know that that's being paid attention to, and it's filtering out through the entire organization, that's fine. But I've worked long enough and am enough of a study of human nature to know that change happens slowly. And when you're in a position where you're kind of a change agent, you know, you can get a lot of pushback from a lot of places. And so I'm trusting that your staff and everyone is really paying attention to that, so that our efforts don't get sidetracked.
Okay. And I know Commissioner Eggers has a question, but the one point Commissioner Long brought up that I thought I wanted to kind of jump on was, I saw last week, I think it was last week, OSHA had put out revised standards for work conditions during the heat. And since we adopted OSHA standards, even though we didn't need to, I assume that we're doing that with water breaks and shade breaks and those kind of things.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's the kind of thing I'm talking about when I, when.
Microphone.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Chair. That's exactly the kind of thing that I'm talking about in terms of how we work with different organizations in very different places, and the information is constantly changing, as we learn more about the effects of the heat and the effects the heat has on our growing season. I mean, this is not a joke. Let me just please, point of order for one moment. You know, there was a huge article last summer about the enormous heat and how it was drying up areas that are, that are irrigated by the Hoover Dam. Now think about that and the huge impact. Now think about that and the huge impact the Hoover Dam has on the whole Midwest in terms of our growing season, in terms of our agriculture and growing crops. And so if the heat is so intense that it's affecting our ability to grow things, I mean, we're a huge agricultural state, a lot of people don't know that, but we are. And those things are important to keep your eye on. I rest my case, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, thank you, just a couple of comments. First of all, Barry, I'd, I'd asked you yesterday, and I, I wasn't unfortunately part of the general fund discussion. And I'd asked you yesterday about bringing, when you bring your plan back, a, a strategic use of the reserves that we've built up over the last couple of years. And we did it for a reason and, you know, people kinda tend to wanna forget that. But two years we built it up, just like the state did, so that we make sure that we anticipated any downturn in the economies. Those were critically important, so we raised it up to 23, 24%. I see where it looked like targeting at 28%. And then there was a comment, a bullet point that said reserve levels for 23 are currently at 28%, which is a 15, which is above the 15% policy. However, reserves at a level to provide three months of cash flow is 23.6%. And so I definitely wanna have policy conversation about if there's any implication there that we're moving away from 15, maybe 17% on a permanent basis. I'm not talking about this transitional basis, then I think we need to have that conversation. Now that, that bullet point made me feel like you've just taken away a great number of reserve dollars that could be available for some of these one-time costs. So I just wanna plant that seed. And secondly, as it relates to all of the climate change discussion, I think it's healthy to have. I think we need to rely on national work that's being done, national research that's being done. I think we're handling things well, we're anticipating market changes in the automobile industry. That's coming, whether you believe in it or not, it's coming. And there's gonna be more electrical vehicles and that kinda thing. And, and I'm kinda glad that we, if we don't knee-jerk react to everything that comes out. So I, I appreciate the deliberative process that we're going through. And I would say that it has a very minor effect on the national economy issues that we have today. I would argue that till the cows come home. And those are the cows that are out on our agricultural land that are subject to these weather changes. I'm not saying it has no effect, I'm just saying there are many other factors that are affecting our, our national economy right now. And I think we need to be focusing on some of those and what we can do about those other issues as it relates to this. So those are my only two comments, thank you.
Commissioner Long.
What?
Go ahead, Commissioner Long.
Were you first? I'm so sorry. No, I, I appreciated what Commissioner Eggers just said, which leads me to, I too would like to have that conversation about the 15% reserve. And I guess I'd be curious about at what point during this process would we have that? Because I think I had asked you, Commissioner Seal, in a prior meeting, how long ago did we establish that goal? Yeah, it was way before I got here. What?
2011.
Okay, 2011. It's 2022? I would venture to say that things today are different than they were in 2011. And we've had some experiences in the timeframe that have caused us to pull down from our reserves, haven't we?
Not that I can recall any time in recent.
Not after Irma?
Well, we, we did, well, we, you're right, we did float a loan to pay for things that, in fact, we got reimbursed for. So having those cash reserves, I'm, you're right, it, it allowed us not to have to, or to be able to spend what you needed to spend. We can have that conversation anytime. And I know Commissioner Peters wants to chime in on, and I don't know if it was this topic, but your, your 15% is a basic GFOA, government finance, best practice.
Is it?
You know, and, and we can, we can show you that I'm, and Chris will correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think it's, that is, every, every place that I've been, we've had a 15% reserve as a standard. We also had a cash flow and that's where I, I brought up the issue of cash flow. So I wanted to show you what that is. And that, because that enables you, it, it's a, it's a time period. You could call it a secondary reserve, you know, but it, but it really is a cash flow issue that i- if you have strong reserves, you may or may not need. But I wanted to show you what that is. So we can certainly take a look at our policies and bring that back to you. Part of the discussion, Commissioner Eggers, that I think you come in just a few minutes after we had that discussion yesterday, it's about use of reserves. And, and what I was saying at that time is we're gonna make some very big decisions regarding our buildings, you know, later this year. And so we might look at those simultaneously because if we're gonna build a new building, well, it might be wise to use some of that one-time money for one-time purpose, to be able to accomplish that task. But I, but I don't have that plan baked yet. I don't know what, and that's the reason we have CBRE onboard, to, to look at all of the different options and present those to you. Do we, do we make investments in our current buildings? Do we do, build a new building? What is the value of this land if we did build a different, in a different location? What the value of this land is? I wanted to get all that together forward to where you can make an informed decision and we're simply not there yet. But that's what I had at least looked at because one of the things we did is, if you recall, we had $100 million that was targeted in the penny for a replacement facility. Now, it was, it was part of our buildings, it didn't consolidate down. It was, it was to do a joint venture with the city of Clearwater. And it, I mean, I'll just leave it at that. But, so we, we took that out of the penny. And the reason we took it out of the penny is so I didn't want that to have to compete with other penny projects. We were struggling to meet the community needs out of the penny. And so we still have that issue to, to resolve about what are we gonna do with our physical buildings? And so that's, that's a reason, that's the only thing I would kinda repeat is, you, we could use reserves for that purpose if we chose to do that, for, for part of the solution.
And I, and I just, just finished my thought there. And I don't disagree that we don't need to look at all of that. I also think of, you know, one-time dollars for one-time costs on the one hand. But the other hand is, no matter what we say about interest rates, and though they've gone up a little bit, are still at all-time lows. And if you're gonna do an intergenerational project, because the one we have now, the building we have now, it probably spans three generations at least. And so there's an argument to be made of a blend between, you know, really low-interest rate debt as well as cash on hand so that we, so that we, we don't just, we don't burden everybody local at this point in time. And we let people from future generations deal with a property that's gonna be there for all of their use as well. So I just, I think it's a good, healthy discussion to have and, and I appreciate the, the thoughts on that. I did talk to the, the previous budget director before they, before he left and just to get his take on it. And he, he acknowledged that 15 may be a little bit low, but he certainly wasn't talking about where they are now. I think it was more like 16 or 17 might be more appropriate. But I'd be interested in hearing the best practices that you're, you're researching as well, so thank you.
So we'll, we'll do some, some research on that, that is consistent. But I'll, I'll bring you back some best practices and have that discussion.
All right, Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, and I just wanna concur on Commissioner Eggers' comments about relying on some national research, national, international research. And if South Florida is doing research, then there's more research to watch. I don't know that we have to do our own research, I think there'll be plenty there. Now, to shift on another subject, and I've asked, and I've never really pushed this, but I think it's something we ought to think about now. And so I had asked previously if we, when we do budgets, if we could look at the budget that we desire, just like we did this time, but also look at a budget that may be a 3% reduction or something like that, just so we could, you know, we used to do this in the legislature and it was very helpful. And it was like, this is what we want in our budget, but if we have this hurricane recession that they're talking about, and we don't know if in fact we'll have this, and that's the new term they're using, hurricane recession, are we prepared and what would it look like? And so when you do an exercise on presenting budgets and, you know, maybe the sheriff's, his presentation would have been exactly what it was. And then, well, if we were in this hurricane recession and I had to reduce money, what would, what would my department look like? Where would I lose that 3%? And it's always helpful when you do that because then it helps you kinda think about, well, I would never wanna lose his hospital people. So maybe, you know, if we went into some kinda horrible thing and we had to do some reductions, which the counties had to do before, we'd have a better idea on where the priorities would be on what we do on cutting. And so I, you know, it's, it might be extra time for staff to do that, but it's always a good exercise to consider, where in my department, if I had to, if I had to lose 3% of my budget, where would I do it? And it's a great exercise for them to always be prepared for what's next, which always keeps them thinking about streamlining and, and how we can do more efficient things just in case something were to happen. And we've never really done that and I've asked you to, but I never really asked publicly. And so I just think that's a good exercise to do maybe next year. You know, if something happens, if we do have this hurricane recession they're talking about, what would happen, how fast, how quick would it be? I don't know if it would be this year, but it might be next year or the year after. County had to, you know, took lots of hard hits, lots of layoffs last time. I don't know if the way they made their cups last, the cuts last time were just knee-jerk because they weren't well-thought-out and all of a sudden we're in this recession and what do I do? But when you do an exercise like that, it kinda helps you understand where your priorities are. And so I wasn't here when the county had to go through that recession, I was running a city at that time. You know, and luckily that city had, was very flush with reserves. And so in my city, we didn't lay off a person, we just spent on the reserves because they were there for an emergency and we were in an emergency. Because that city was really bare bones to begin with. And so I just think it's a, it's an exercise to consider in the future that everybody that does a presentation say, this is what our budget is this year, but if I had to lose 2% or I had to lose 3%, this is what my budget would look like and this is the service that would go away. And I think that's a great way for us to understand their departments a little better. And if by chance we had some kinda crisis, we would understand where the shortfalls would be in each department if we had to take stuff away. And it kinda gives a, a good framework to do that. And we did in the legislature under Rick Scott. And I just think it's a good exercise to do. I know it's a little more work, but I think it's worth its time. Just in case we ended up, you know, we're, we're healthy, we are a very healthy county, we're very lucky. And I hope it stays that way, but just in case there is a crisis, it would be nice to know that we'd be prepared and say, okay, if we had to get, if everyone presented a 3% loss and we only had to lose a 1.5%, we could really prioritize. I, and maybe the hospital and the jail could never be one that's gonna lose it, but someplace else could. And so it's just kind of a exercise that I think would be valuable.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You gave me a great idea, Commissioner Peters. I don't know if you'll think it's great, but, and I don't know how to do this and like Commissioner Peters made reference to, I had asked about this a year or two ago, but I never really did get the answer. So here's my question, Mr. Rose, this'll probably fall on you. So over the years that I have been here, we have pretty consistently stepped up to fill the gap. I know we've done it for the clerk, I know we've done it for the public defender and the state attorney. And we've also done it in some areas of health. I'd be interested in knowing how, from a percentage perspective, cause Commissioner Peters said 3%, right, Commissioner?
I said 3% or 2% or one, you know, it doesn't matter whatever the number is.
Can we agree on 3 just for the exercise?
I'm like 2.
What? Or whatever, just that for kicks and giggles, how much that has added up to, the holes that we've plugged because either statutorily or for whatever other reason, it's really the state of Florida's responsibility to fund those things. But the state of Florida would not in whatever year it was. So of course they all, you know, the heads of those departments came to us and begged for us to fill the gap. I'd be curious how much that adds up to from a percentage perspective, cause that might be a...
Yeah.
No.
No, not, no.
Over the year, we have filled the need in different departments where
Social services.
Had been typically a state, school nurses, for example, millions of dollars that we pay for school nurses had been a state responsibility that the school board came and asked us to fill. And time and time again, things like that.
A lot of human service stuff, yeah.
Lot of the human services that former, former public defender, Mr. Dillinger, used to come and ask for, beg and plead, and we did, cause we could.
I, you know, I do have a comment on that. And so, so just like Bob Dillinger came in and begged and pleaded for money and mostly for diversion programs, he ended up, that ended up saving us money in the long run. Because it helps save money in the jail, it helps saves money in the courts, it helps saves money, money. So I don't have a problem with that, really. You know, granted, it would've been great if the state did it, state didn't do it. But us investing into his diversion programs, there was ROI on there for us.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, see, what I was talking about was strictly a budget procedure and, and activity and exercise. Not, that's something different and, and that's great. But I, I think it would be hard to put a value on what we invested versus what the payback was. So the state failed to put in all the nurses in the school, but what was the payback? What's the ROI on that? And, and it probably, the ROI would be a plus, a surplus to us. So, you know, yeah, it would be interesting, maybe not always, Charlie, I don't know.
I mean, not, I mean, if you're just siloing it to the county budget, to the county functions, to the school functions, absolutely, to the betterment of humankind and our, our students, absolutely. But dollars and cents, I don't know.
Dollars and cents maybe in the, I, I just, maybe that's an exercise to do. I think it's different than what I was talking about, but I, I don't know.
We can do both.
If that's a, if that's, if that's an easy ROI to figure out, yeah. And the schools, the benefits more to the schools on kids not, they're not missing more school and stuff. The jail stuff, definitely, the public defender stuff, that's a benefit to the county based on jail, court, probation, all that other stuff that goes with it. And so that's a hard thing to figure out and God bless you if you have to do that. But I was just talking about an exercise, a budget exercise that I think would be valuable just in case we get this hurricane recession they're talking about.
You know, I understand what you're saying, but for example, I clearly remember when we stepped up to fund neighborly senior services for the Meals on Wheels program, cause...
Well, we, we can do both, okay? And I have no issue with doing both. I will tell you that the majority of the non-required functions will come out of human services. And, and, and the people that are cutting them will tie them back to that it's gonna cost you more in the long run. I've been doing budgets for 35 years and, and I've went through so many, give me 5%, give me 10%. And, and that's what, that's where it ends up falling out. And, and I don't, I completely agree with you that there is a return on investment there. The question is whether, would they have gotten locked up or would they have stayed out in the community? And so was there really that return? If the, if the jail's full, the jail's full.
Yeah.
And it's hard, it's really hard to, to get that type of direct analysis on all of our different programs.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think the point was to go through and, I mean, obviously there, well, hopefully there's merit in each one of them because we funded them.
Right.
But that, just a pure dollar amount was what, and I think Mr. Woodard and Mr. Berger did that. Cause we, the budgets haven't always been like this. And so we did that exercise to a point, we walked up to the line and, you know, as negotiation part of the process. But, and I think if, as we get into next year's budget for, and I think it's always a healthy thing, you do it in your personal life, it's, it's not a, it's not a bad exercise. Talking about how we process that, I think is gonna be important. I don't necessarily know that you want staff coming up here and say, well, the, the first thing I'd cut is XYZ in a public forum kinda thing. So I would just want us to be careful how we, how we function it, you know what I'm saying? Commissioner Seal.
Well, I gave the example of the $11 million Medicaid match that we have to do every year. And I know one year we had to go back, they, they get, made us pay even more, I mean, it was a lot.
Yeah.
So we have done this before where we've added up what, the unfunded mandates. And I don't wanna do it as a percentage, I wanna do it in real dollars. I think that would be valuable. All I can tell you is that, why I keep championing keeping a healthy reserve is because I have the scars left over from the Great Recession. And if you have the time to go back and watch any of those meetings way back then, I mean, it was very painful. We went... We went department by department, classification by classification, trying to figure out where we could cut. We laid off 1,000 people out of about 1/3 of our workforce. The parks redid how they did things, I mean, it was incredibly painful, and for our employees, for our citizens, for, I mean, I just always look back at that time period and say, everybody hunkered in the bunkers, because it was just like, we were afraid the sky was going to fall down, and something bad was going to happen in our county, and it did not. So, I'll just leave that with you all, because that's why I keep saying, I'm so glad we are in a place where we are now, and I never want to forget that these are the people's money, not ours. This belongs to our citizens, so every dollar that we spend is, comes from our citizens.
We didn't see it directly as closely, but the state slashed $8 billion in very short order out of the budgets. We went from a $73 billion budget to a $65 billion budget in what seemed like overnight during that time period. Commissioner Long.
Yes, and to Commissioner Seal's point about how many people we let go, I seem to recollect that it was 1,700, and...
It might have been with the constitutionals, because, I mean, we went, we, that was another really painful meeting, was with the constitutionals, because we basically told the sheriff, you know, and everybody, you're cutting your budget by, I think it was at least 25%.
So, but the point I wanted to make, though, Commissioner, was that, as far as I know, we never have gotten back to that number of employees.
No.
Ever. And what it forced us to do, I think, was rethink and retool how we operated, right?
Well, we do, and as you know, I've presented to you before, you know, over, we constantly look at that, and especially where we can take vacancies and convert them into something else, and use technology to drive down our costs. The more we can drive down our costs, the easier it is to withstand a recession, you know? And so, I always try to do that. You know, you gave three years, three years of raises, and the departments report to me, went up by 0.9 of 1%. Okay? So, we work at driving down that cost, and we work at reducing, and we're just, now we're putting some back, and few in parks and things like that, but very, very strategically.
Commissioner Jerome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, actually, I think that's a great idea, Commissioner Peters, to have that exercise. I know when I was running a city through the recession, same thing, we did have a healthy reserve, and we were fortunate to not have to lay off anybody. I was kind of amazed that we didn't have to lay off anybody. And so, I understand the value of having a reserve on something when it hits the fan, if you will, but I think ours was only 15 or 18%, so that is a pretty healthy reserve. I also was running nonprofit programs, and we went through many of those. Your grant is cut 25% as of last month, you know, and that's a painful thing to do. I will say, you know, we've been talking about consultants, and the good thing about consultants is you can just not do it, you know? It's easier than laying somebody off, for sure. But I would like to see us bring the reserve down a bit, and still have a healthy reserve. I think we're fine, and we can do those exercises. I know that we have been conservative, and I appreciate that. I think we're continuing to be conservative, but I think we can be more conservative on the reserves, and, you know, like Commissioner Egger said, if we have to borrow money to do a new building, then we'll do that. I still think, there's a buyer here in the city of Clearwater that would probably give us a nice amount of money for this building.
All right, I think we're on the middle of page one.
Well, the last item we have is the Clearwater Transit Center and the initial ferry investment. So, here, the PSTA discussed, one, the transit center, and was requesting matched dollars for a federal grant. When I originally discussed that with Brad, I was really looking to use the ARPA, and I was going to bring your recommendation with ARPA to be able to help them with their match, but we can't use federal dollar against federal dollar. And so, you know, at this point, I wouldn't recommend that we do that, and I think, again, it's a major policy shift if we start using general fund dollars for PSTA operations. And so, you've just got to be aware of that. And then, the second piece is the whole ferry, Clearwater ferry issue, and it's a larger, it's waterborne transportation. We've had discussions with them, we're going to have more discussions with them. Between July 19th, when I present the budget to you, we can even have more discussions between that time and the time that you adopted, if you want to go somewhere with that. Right now, I haven't seen anything that at least I would support, because it's disproportionate, and there's nearly no rhyme or reason as to how the cost is. They're going to go after grants, there's a lot of money in federal grants, and I suggest they do that. The primary driver of the cost of this is getting the boats, and to set that up, and if they're successful in getting the grants, then we can figure out the operating. And I understand they have to have an operating plan to be able to submit to the grant. What's been proposed is that we prepare the majority share, and then, some of the cities, you know, provide little amounts of money, because they can't afford it. Well, if you can't afford it, don't have the service. But, you know, we, I think that's another discussion that we need to have, we're going to have more discussions. I don't have a recommendation for you at this point on that, but those are two major policy issues that we'll have to grapple with here in our budget.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, about the policy issues, if I may, I can't remember, Commissioner Flowers, are you on the TMA, Transit Management? Okay, well, at the, not the last meeting, but the one before that, I learned a very interesting factoid, and it was that there are only two counties in the state, and we're one of those two, that do not have transportation dollars coming out of the general fund. So, my question from a policy perspective is, because it wasn't too many days ago that we had a preliminary conversation about, when Kelly was presenting, the huge lack of dollars that we have to take care of our own transportation issues in the county, in our county. So, from, again, from a policy perspective, I would like to have a conversation about, is there a piece, I'm not asking for a huge amount, but I do think at some place, sometime, we're going to have to look at the general fund to take care of some of our transportation needs. Just a thought. If there's only two counties in the whole state that aren't doing it, well, then I beg to ask, well, why aren't we?
I would just be careful with people that want to advance a story, use data to help shape, you know, what they're pitching, because I've asked staff to do that same research, and to who uses general fund. I will tell you, I've been in four major urban areas, and I have never used general fund in our transit operations, not in Chicago, not in Cincinnati, not in Columbus. So, you know, I'm sure there are. I know Palm Beach does, I know Broward does, but I don't think that, there's, remember, there's not that many transit agencies out there, and so, you've got, I would just ask us to look through that. I've asked staff to do that research.
Well, we can ask everyone to fact...
Yeah, we can, and I am interested in that, and I want to get, I want to get facts for you, you know?
I appreciate it.
You know, so we can have that discussion. And the simple answer is, is if it's a policy, you want to do that, well, then I'll tell you, you tell me the amount, and I'll tell you the millage that it takes to do it, and, you know, and that's really how it would occur, the same discussion we're having with Kelly's backlog and road needs. I'm saying, okay, if we spend this much, here's the amount. If we spend this much, here's the amount. And the reality is, at the end of the day, you know, that'll determine the overall rate for the budget.
It's either a millage increase or a service decrease somewhere else.
That's correct. And that concludes the discussion points on your budget.
Further questions? Ms. Coffey, did you have a comment on this section of the budget?
No, but I did want to say, I've had a real pleasure sitting with you a couple times this week, so thanks so much for having me.
I wanted to make sure that Ms. White heard your voice at home there, so. Anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Burton, final comments?
We will be back on July, the 19th will be the budget presentation, and we have a work session on the 14th. So, we have a couple items outstanding. The one other item is, the other day, we talked about the, drawing a blank now, the tenant bill rights, okay? I've asked staff to get together the piece that they were missing, which is the notification periods, and let's do both of those at once, and so, we'll target the first meeting in August. Yeah, when they do rent increases. So, that gives them a little time to bake that in, that way, we don't have to do it twice. So, but they'll need a little more time. So, first week in August, we'll bring that back to you. But we'll have a work session on the 14th, and the budget presentation on the 19th, and that kicks off the final recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Rose, thank you for your good work, and it's been a pleasure seeing your staff, some that we've known for a while, and some that are newer faces, but every one of them handled themselves well, answered questions, and a real pleasure to see them work. So, thank you in your department for your good work. Thank you Communications for your work in these six days of facilitating us being over here, Administrator staff for facilitating us being over here, and all that goes into that. So, we appreciate all the good work that goes into making this happen.
And thank you especially for buying lunch.
With that, we are adjourned.